Good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Do I have a motion for back to public?
Monica and Marikey, okay, we are back in public session. Welcome to the March 22 meeting of the Board of Education. First, we have the approval of the minutes from February, uh oh. February 28, thank you, I have motion. Alec first, Neelash second, all in favor? And it is unanimous. Okay, next is treasurer's report, but there is no treasurer's report today. And then we get to recognition of community and public comments. And I'm going to start that off by reading some general instructional information. We are now entering the public comment period. We anticipate that all speakers and audience members will conduct themselves in a civil manner. While the main purpose of our meetings is for the board to discuss and address school district business, we recognize the benefit of hearing from the public on matters on the current agenda or of general concern. We have two comment periods. Members of the public may comment at either point. However, the second comment period following the superintendent's report is limited to those topics. If a speaker begins to readdress the same point made earlier, they will be asked to move on. This rule applies to comments seeking to expand or clarify points made earlier. Comments, individual comments are limited to three minutes for a total of 30 minutes for all comments. As a general rule, we won't respond to questions or comments at this meeting, except if they are fact-based and we are able to provide succinct reply. I recognize how unsatisfying that feels to those who are present or listening, but our duty is to the district as a whole. Further, the administration often needs time to look into any issue that is raised. If so, we will ask the superintendent to follow up with speakers whose questions are not directly related to the evening's agenda and to which answers cannot be readily provided. Now I'm going to read some information specifically about tenure based upon questions that have come in to us with regard to that topic. And I would note actually that before I get to this, that on the district website, if you go to the magnifying glass, the search bar, and you type in tenure, there will be a list of all of the different, not even all, of many of the different steps that are followed in the process of determining whether somebody gets tenure or not. The Board of Education does not and cannot legally allow public comments about individual personnel or any personnel matter at public meetings. The reason for this is the potential ramifications of negative comments. Such criticism in a public setting could violate its staff members' right to privacy. Two, it could be destructive of an employee's ability to work effectively. Personnel issues are considered confidential and are appropriately dealt with in a confidential process. Moreover, as tenure is a personnel matter, it is an issue for human resources and thus lies with the superintendent. The board's role is to exercise oversight, which we most assuredly do and have been doing. We are happy to have already received so much feedback in the appropriate form, emails to the superintendent and the board. Our policy, which is number 1360, again, it's on the, you can get there through the district website by going to Board of Education and going to the link here. Number 1360 offers more information on this topic. However, the key language is the board will not permit discussion involving individual district personnel or students in public session. Those wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and/or concerns in the manner that is set forth in policy 8110. I hope that this has provided some guidance and some useful guidance. And with that, I will go to Victoria. I'm sorry. My apologies. Recognition of community. And if there is anybody who would like to speak, I'm going to ask people to go through the second row or further back to get to the podium over there, just because we have a lot of wires down here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll be standing for Kyle Hozer this evening. I have a lot of good news to share about our students from Edgemont Junior High School. I'm going to begin with our young artists. We're pleased to share with you that we had several students participate in the Katona Museum Young Artists 2022 exhibit. We want to congratulate Brooke Bayless, Yan Yi Fung, Suji Jagal, Rebecca Kim, and Chloe Markowitz on their participation and also express our appreciation to Adriana Marosa, the AP Studio Art teacher, as she supported them throughout this work. I would also like to share the accomplishments of 10 of our Edgemont seniors who were named finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. The finalists are Kenneth G., Alexandra J. Lee, Sandra J. Miller, Dylan D. Patel, Mehir P. Patel, Samantha E. Richter, Michael W. Roll, Nishi S. Upuluri, Anya D. Void, and Sean Wang. So we want to congratulate them. We'll hold our applause because there's more good news. Our robotics club has been very busy building our stellar program. I'm proud to share that they, the club placed one first place called the Control Award and third place called the Inspire Award in the New York Excelsior Remote Qualifier. Due to these wins, our team now qualifies for the New York Regional Championship in Utica, New York. There, our team will compete for two spots for the FTC World Championship. Not the Federal Trade Commission, but the first tech challenge. FTC is a competition in which thousands of teams across the world compete in robotics, emphasizing values of innovation, collaboration, and professionalism. These are great skills that our students will be taking out into the world. We congratulate our students. We wish them best of luck and appreciate the club advisor Rebecca Capzuro for all her work. It is also my great pleasure to share with you that the following students received medals in their respective events at the Science Olympiad Lower Hudson Valley Regional Tournament held just before midwinter recess. Yanxi Fung, Rana Malik, Aryan Kumar, Advait Palve, Gia Singh, Albert Lee, Miriam Kim, Justin Alexander, David Litwak, Nayab Walid, Ellen Lin, Tanasi Nagaldin, Vivian Wong, Ariel Novaminsky, James Jiang, Bhavani Gopal Krishna, Yuktasha, Emma Takada. And a special recognition to the following students, Yanxi Fung and Ariel Novaminsky, who won first place in forensics. Justin Alexander and David Litwak won first place in detector building. And Miriam Kim, Aryan Kumar, and Rana Malik won third place in code busters. We congratulate the Olympiad Club and a special appreciation to the club advisor Gina Kim. Recently, our Edgemont Chess Club participated in the New York State Scholastic Chess Tournament held March 12 through 13 in Saratoga Springs, New York. As a team, Edgemont won first place for the U-1200 section. Congratulations to the club members. And again, we appreciate the club advisor Matan Pralaltensky on this accomplishment. And finally, it is my great pleasure to share with you the following accomplishments for the Jazz Ensemble and Chamber Choir Vocal Jazz Ensemble. This past weekend, all the students participated in the Clark Terry Jazz Festival at the University of New Hampshire. The EHS Jazz Ensemble won an honorable mention in the category of Large Ensemble B. The Jazz Ensemble Outstanding Musician Awards are as follows. Theo Kornblum won for tenor saxophone. Ella Schneider for trumpet. Vanjeski for piano. And Dylan Buckser Schultz for the drum set. The EHS Chamber Choir and Vocal Jazz Ensemble also won first place in the category for Vocal Jazz Ensemble for the ninth consecutive year. They won for six years in a row at the Berklee Jazz Festival in 2014 to 2019. They won at the National Jazz Festival in 2020 and 2021, and now this year at the Clark Terry Jazz Festival. And the Vocal Jazz Ensemble Outstanding Musician Awards went to Abigail Duque, soprano vocal soloist; Isha Patel, soprano vocal soloist; and Benny Shuket for tenor vocal soloist. We congratulate all of our students on this recognition and we thank and appreciate the music teachers John Cataliato and Kelly Morris on this outstanding accomplishment.
Good evening. Lucas Chaffee, Sealy Place Class of 1991, Edgemont High School Class of 1997. I'm here to first express appreciation to the board. There's been a lot of focus recently on the tenure process and the community's become very aware of it. And I think that's a very healthy thing. Every time that I reached out to learn something from the board, they've been tremendously responsive and honestly, very surprisingly tremendously available. So just want to express that appreciation first. It's great to see the district standardizing its processes. And recently, they posted a new webpage that outlines the district's tenure policy. When it was posted last week, I noticed that there was no mention of improvement plans or mentorship. And I recommend adding the following few sentences to that document so we can keep mentorship and improvement plans front and center, especially as we have such a transition to new personnel taking over the board and the district. Something to this effect, and I'll submit it so you don't have to write it all down. But our district's goal is to hire great candidates and retain great staff. When an employee is falling short of the standards necessary to obtain tenure, their supervisor will clearly explain what is needed for them to change in order for them to earn tenure. New York State School Law specifies that each supervisor must issue a written improvement plan by October 1st of each year. The supervisor works hard to mentor and help that staff member achieve the goals laid out in the improvement plan. If the employee still cannot meet the standards, then they are released. It's not a comment on anything that has or hasn't happened, but I think as we transition new leadership, we put mentorship and employee improvement plans front and center out of fairness to them because that fairness will be felt by our students. I yield the balance of my time to the next speaker. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Namchaffee, Edgemont High School Class of 1998 and Greenville Class of 1992, also Team Sealy currently. I'm a parent of two children at Sealy Place, and I want to say that I'm thrilled with how much my kids are learning at Sealy. They love, absolutely love going to school every day, and that's the truth. The return of in-person classes was a tremendous relief and positively affected our emotional and mental well-being, as well as providing critical relief for our job and financial security. I was delighted to see how quickly and safely Sealy went back to in-person classes. Specifically, when my daughter had a close contact with a friend at school who later tested positive for COVID, the situation was handled superbly. When hate against Asian-American Pacific Islander people erupted, I looked at my biracial children and thought, what books can they read to help them see the beauty in themselves and their community's diversity in this polarized time? Because as we know, there's no community, including our own, that is immune to racism. I was heard when my book recommendations were taken into consideration and the idea to diversify our offerings was accepted. I was heard. Who can they look up to at school that is a reflection of their inner joy and can provide an incredible ray of sunshine day in and day out? Because certainly, my own rays have been eradicated during the pandemic. When someone helps to open the car door every day, rain or shine, wind or freezing temperatures, there is more warmth and sunshine radiating in those 20 seconds that can lift an army about to go to war to defend itself against the hustle of work-life balance and to pay the bills and school taxes. We, our family, put our trust in the whole team at Sealy Place and at the Edgemont School District. Even though our families left the district after we graduated, we were urged to find a way to move back home so that we could find security in knowing that our children would experience the incredible love of community and love of learning that Edgemont has to offer because we know it exists right here. We come from a trust in this system, a trust in its process. We trust that the district, its administrators, the faculty and school board will do what is right and what is best for our children for years to come. Our school is the main reason that we are all here in Edgemont. Let's keep it on track. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be recognized? All right, Victoria, acceptance gifts, sorry.
Yes, I'd like to ask the board's acceptance of some very generous gifts. From the E Club, $3,000 requested for Edgemont Athletics, and that's a Star Trek IX 3250 treadmill. From the PTA, $5,000 to Sealy Place and Greenville Schools, requested to be used for a band consultant. From the Edgemont School Foundation, $33,333 requested to be used to support the bond payments and support of the bond. And from the Regeneron and the Society for Science, $2,000 requested to be designated to further support excellence in science, math, and their engineering education at the high school. And this award is in recognition of EHS student Nishin Upluri.
Do I have a motion? Monica, second. Jennifer, I just want to thank the, each of these individual groups and the community as a whole because we know that these are community-supported entities and the district is enormously grateful for these gifts. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Onto the superintendent's report.
Yes, I'd like to, well, I will kick it off, but I will be joined by Dr. Curtin, Dr. Thomas, and Mr. Garafano to report out on the district goal and action plan update. So tonight, we're going to update the board and the community on the action plan and regarding the three district components, all in support of one district goal. I'd like to thank Dr. Thomas, Dr. Curtin, and Mr. Garafano for leading each of these component areas. And also especially, I'd like to thank all the faculty and staff, as well as all the members of the district committee. There was a lot of input, a lot of conversations. And honestly, the last couple of months have been spent on trying to narrow down. There were so many good ideas related to the three areas and we wanted to take on so much, and that's really been the kind of prioritization. I think the teachers who most recently provided that input. Also, Board of Education members, representatives, were on the one, each of the three district committees. And tonight's the board's opportunity to ask additional questions and to provide additional input as the teams continue to prioritize. So Jonathan, just go to the next slide. So the whole purpose behind why we have goals is to provide focus. As a school system, as you know, we can be going in a number of different directions, but truly the difference between a searchlight and a spotlight. What are we going to focus on? And how do we work to focus on the same goal moving in the same direction? Then we have a better chance of actually reaching that goal collectively. Organizational learning, as you know, is different than individual learning. It's more complex. It takes longer to be able to align in that direction for that goal. So with that, we're going to begin the review of the action plan. And I believe Dr. Thomas is going to.
Good evening. So the first component goal is understanding and appreciation of self. So the goal in this is to uplift students by creating affirming environments where students can develop confidence and cultivate the skills necessary to reach their own goals. So we know SEL can be a powerful lever for creating caring, just, inclusive, and supportive school communities. When we review the action plan in September, we discussed creating a district committee for each goal component. The committee members included, let me switch to the next slide. The committee members included students, parents, administrators, and faculty, as you can see for component one here. The purpose of the committee was to ensure that a variety of perspectives are understood and considered in creating the action plan. We sought feedback from the committee and faculty on how to prioritize the action plan. Based on this work for goal component one, we broke the steps into three parts. Thank you. Steps currently underway, the next 12 months, and long-term action steps, if not sooner. So as you can see, the action steps include allocating consistent time for social-emotional implementation, creating a scope and sequence for the Sanford Harmony lessons, training teacher aides, and infusing social-emotional strategies at the elementary school. At junior, senior high school, it includes infusing culturally responsive social-emotional interventions in the intervention bank, ways to maximize space so students can decompress, embed social-emotional strategies into the curriculum, and collaborate with parents and community. So currently, elementary teachers are implementing the lessons from Sanford Harmony in their classes. District-wide psychologists and school counselors participated in a four-day training on dialectical behavioral therapy in schools. So what exactly is that? The main goals are to teach students the skills to live in the moment, develop healthy coping skills, how to manage their stress, regulate their emotions, and improve their relationship with others. Go to the next slide, Jonathan. So as you can see, the castle framework that's on the left that guides our social-emotional work is aligned with the four skills related to dialectical behavioral therapy. So dialectical approach utilizes change strategies and acceptance strategies simultaneously. It holds the belief that two seemingly opposing ideas can both be true at the same time. For example, we're all doing the best we can and we can do better. So part of the action plan and the budget for next year includes ongoing training and supervision for district-wide psychologists and school counselors from cognitive behavior consultants for strategies to teach students mindfulness, how to tolerate distress, regulate their emotions, and interpersonal effectiveness. So we've looked at one aspect of it. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Curtin to discuss component two.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. As Dr. Neelash and Dr. Thomas said, I'm going to talk to you about the second goal component in our district goal, which focuses on understanding and appreciation of others. I'll just give the members of the audience a moment to quickly read through the text that will, and I'll talk a little bit about the action plans that we worked to set in motion. Next slide, please. So just a couple of words about the process that we followed. It's very similar among our three groups. We met regularly to kind of share what was working and what wasn't. And I actually stole a lot from Paul Garafano because he was doing a really good job at it. So thank him for whatever went right, at least. And I guess, no. So there was a kickoff meeting where all the groups were together with Victoria, and we did an exercise where we asked people to try to describe what the school would look like at the end of this plan in various ways. And our group then started by looking at some of that feedback from all the members of the committees and isolating three main themes. The first was curriculum. The second was professional learning. And the third was community engagement. When we looked at all the ideas and sort of aspirations that people had put out there, those were the three buckets that felt like represented the majority of what people were looking to work on. And so then there was a series of meetings where the educators on the committee met to take those key themes and develop them into action plans. What would be the steps that would be realistic, yet also exciting to get us towards achieving progress in each of those areas? And eventually, we shared that draft plan of action steps with the broader committee, which also included parents and students. You see all the members of our committee there. I think it's a nice cross-section across schools, across content areas, stakeholder groups. So, and they were all wonderful to work with. Next slide. So as Victoria mentioned, a problem became apparent pretty soon after we started our work, and that was that there was just too much to do, right? There are, we've all had a lot of action steps. And so we worked a lot over the last month or two to try to identify, well, what are the highest leverage action steps? And what are the ones that are already happening? And what are the ones that we can put off for a little while? So I'll just quickly start by saying, you know, we already have a number of things underway, the area of personality, equity, inclusion. We've partnered with a trainer who works at Paris University, and she started to work with our sixth and seventh grade teachers. I think a very good response to that. We spent a lot of time working on our hiring policies and also had some success working with the PTA, the elementary schools, to bring in programming that focuses on this area. The real action, though, is in this middle column. What are we hoping to accomplish in the next 12 months? And I won't go through every single item on this list. There are six. But I think there's some things there to be cited in all three of those buckets. So for example, having each grade level or course pick one of their units that they're currently working on. And then to revise it with an eye towards diversity and equity inclusion. What does that mean? That means thinking about whose voices are represented here. What are the materials that kids are working with? And what opportunities do kids have to make authentic connections with their own heritage, as well as the cultures of the people around them? We're also going to be doing some professional learning with the teachers on the New York State Culturally Responsive Sustaining Framework, which is really a landmark document at New York State, the New York State Education Department created several years ago that really describes a fair amount of detail what it takes to create a welcoming and affirming environment where kids feel valued and safe and where we can have an appropriate dialogue about many issues surrounding the EDI. And then finally, we're excited to engage community. You'll notice there's an item on their host student parent forums in this area. So we're talking about lots of exciting things, possible shared book read or just an opportunity for people to come together. The first time we did a hiring training with parents and students and teachers, there was like a half-hour session where people really talked more broadly beyond just hiring about diversity in our schools. And it was exciting. And it really kind of demonstrated to me how eager people are to have these conversations. And so we're working towards that.
Mike, I'm just, sorry. The microphone might not be coming through.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Do you want me to go back to where I started? Sorry about that. Sorry, YouTube. So, and then finally, we do have some longer-term action steps that will be started after next year. So those are the things that we have planned, hopefully, for the coming months and even years. And we're excited about that. And that, I think, I'll turn it over to Mr. Garafano to talk a little bit about our third goal.
Thank you, Dr. Curtin. Good evening.
Good evening again, everyone. I'm Paul Garofano. I'm the Director of Technology here at Edgemont. And I have the pleasure of what has become my favorite goal component, component number three, connecting learning to life. As Dr. Curtin said, just take a moment, if you could read that from the back. I'll give you a minute to just eyeball it, but while you're reading it, I'll just pick out my favorite part, which is, or what really resonates with me is students will be able to meaningfully describe not just the what, but the why. The three of us gave a brief presentation in the fall when these three goal components came to life. And when I saw connecting learning to life, I thought about the what and the why. And I don't know about you, but there was definitely a time when I was in school. For me, it was algebra class and I went, why am I learning this? And what we're trying to do with this goal component is bring the why. So every student knows why they're learning what they're learning. This diagram to right here, Dr. Curtin had turned me on to this. This is Simon Sinek's golden circle. And his belief is that successful people or organizations work from the why to the what and not the other way around. So why, in the innermost part, represents people's motives or purposes. The how, representing people's processes or methods. And the what represents the results or the outcome. So let's put that into practicality. So take STEAM. Is everyone familiar with STEAM? Like what STEM used to be now STEAM, the A for art. So for STEAM, the why would be STEAM education further promotes growth mindset and student agency. The how is design thinking, team building, collaboration, project-based learning. And the what are the STEAM courses, right? Coding, robotics, design and modeling, architecture, green architecture. So that's really what, next slide, John. That's, that was really at, at the foundation of this incredible group of educators and parents and board members and students on our goal component three. That's what we worked on and we had some really lively conversations right from the beginning because we were all really passionate about how we can further connect learning to life for our students here at Edgemont. One of the things while we were deriving, so we had our action plans and then we had the tasks. And that's what Doctors Thomas and Curtin were referring to. There are so many things came out of it that we were having a tough time prioritizing. And that's where we started involving the faculty and the rest of the administration. And one of the things we had lengthy discussions about in this process was leadership. So we have all these great initiatives and ideas, which we'll look at in a moment. But who's going to take ownership of them? Much like we weren't the owners of our goal components, but we were the facilitator. We were organizing the meetings. We were helping organize the notes. And that's something that, you know, we're, we're further delving into in our goal component committees with the, the Board of Ed members, the administrators, the teachers and the students. It's about identifying leadership and the teacher leaders and educators who are going to help move the components forward. John, next slide. Okay, so looking at our priorities. Yeah, I kind of do want to read off of this. I can't see my notes on my phone, but one of the action steps that's already in place is reviewing period lengths and instructional strategy. That's already happening here at Edgemont Junior Senior High School. The middle category, the high priority action steps to be started in the next 12 months, articulating a STEAM curriculum, identifying and involving retired or antiquated units or projects, reviewing rationale of weighted grades, identifying and celebrating characters, six of 21st century learners, reviewing ways to celebrate and recognize student achievement. All of these things, I would say at one point in time, a student or a teacher or a parent has gone, this needs to be worked on. That's what we, one of the things that our goal component, our committee walked away from. It was like things that have always kind of been hanging right there. And now is the time as a district, we can seize them and go, let's improve on this. So take for example, I, I work very closely with our, our STEAM initiative and our STEAM program. So you might say, okay, Paul, so what does this look like for in the next 12 months, our STEAM program? Okay, so some of the things we need to do, we need to adopt an articulated curriculum. Currently in our junior, in our junior high school STEAM class, we use the Project Lead the Way curriculum. Maybe that's going to be something we use for our K-12. Maybe not. But that's something we need to do to further this action task forward. We need to identify where fits into K-6. There are some elementary teachers here right now. They're probably going, Paul, where are we going to teach STEAM during the day? This is something we need to further figure out and articulate, work with the faculty. What classes are we going to work, what classes are we going to develop in the high school? We need leadership. We need staff and we need space. We need budget. We need a five to 10-year plan. Where is Edgemont going to be in five? Where is Edgemont going to be in 10 years with our STEAM program? These are all very exciting things. They're all things that we need to take into account. And progress monitoring. We all had in our action plans, the, the final column was progress monitoring. These can't just be goal components that are here today, not tomorrow. They have to be sustainable. They have to be monitored. And with that, I think I'm going to hand it back to Victoria, Mike. Okay.
What? So when we were preparing, we, we came, we said, well, we should end up on our next steps. And we, we thought about that a little bit. And then we were saying, well, who will do this? Would it be one of the three of us or Victoria? And I said, makes some sense, Victoria, right? And she said, I'm not so sure. And I said, why not? And then I said, oh, yeah, okay. So, you know, but in any event, the next steps that we hope to accomplish, first of all, it's easy to talk in generalities about broad goals and action steps. What does it look like? I think what really inspires and excites people is when they can paint a mental picture of what these changes will look like. So one of the things we hope to do is to articulate that vision in really sort of visceral. What do you see, what appear? And we hope that that will help people both to understand these action plans as well as to get excited about them. A lot of the timing of this work was driven by the budget. We knew that, that if we had bold and audacious plans, that it would require resources to do that. And so we've been working very closely with Brian and Victoria to, as we developed these plans, to identify what are the items that will require significant outlay of money or other resources. And these are just a few examples from the three plans that have been built into this year's budget that had, I believe, been shared by Mr. Paul previously. And so I think we, we're in good shape to fill in a budget that supports this work. And finally, and most importantly, it's time to dive in. And at some point during our planning, someone said, well, a lot of the stuff in the 12 months category really can't wait until next year. And I said, that's fine because 12 months starts tomorrow, Wednesday. You know, that in my view, we're already doing some of this work. And a lot of the things that we saw in that middle column each of our presentations either have started or will be starting well before the end of school. So we're really excited and look forward to working with teachers, students, parents, community members on this work to move Edgemont forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, all three of you for, for that really in-depth presentation as to where we, what we have gone through and now where we are headed. That was, it was informative. Do, any board members have any questions? Okay, start, start. Let's start down and work our way up.
Sure. Thank you. Thank all three of you for really informative presentations. Question I wrote early on, which Paul, you touched on generally, but I was hoping that, that some of all of you could expand on this, which is the idea of progress monitoring. You know, everyone has put in a lot of work on this and there are some really excellent ideas there. What are the plans to make sure we're doing this? To, to make sure that these steps are, are being worked on and the goals are being met so we can move on to the long-term ideas?
Can I just add on to that? So the whole metric said, and I'm just nitpicking. It says, you know, steps to be started. And it would be good to put steps when you finish those. And, and this is just kind of putting a pressure on ourselves on where do you want to end these? So it's good to start, but also put an end goal to that. So thank you for raising that point.
If I could just add to, the more specific action plans are more time-bound. They do have time factors as well as, as I think all three of them also said, who's going to be responsible for different components? I can imagine kind of our plan this year was to report out more frequently to make sure that, you know, we're bringing examples, some of the curriculum highlights that we bring to the board would be tied to kind of showing progress. So I imagine that that will be built into it as we to report out.
You know, I was struck by, by the way, excellent work, everybody. This is, I remember when we were first talking about some of this in the board retreat and we were trying to put the language together and I'm saying, how do we get these kind of pie in the skies, pie in the sky kind of stuff to hit the, to hit the road? And I see it happening and it's really exciting to watch it unfold. And as I was looking at the words next steps, I was thinking of Victoria. Because as Victoria was sitting there thinking of her next steps and what was going to be happening beyond this year, she didn't take her eyes off of our next steps. And you could have left those old goals for one more year. You could have saved yourself a little bit of headache. So you show that what we, what, what Edgemont is, is a community of people that work together towards a common goal. And that goal transcends any one person. And this goal, these goals will, will move on and to some degree will be your legacy until they're tweaked and become somebody else's. But thank you very much for keeping them all rolling. We really appreciate that.
Thank you for that. And I've been discussing the goals with Dr. Hamilton and, and in terms of the success of a transition, it is recommended that goals kind of be in place of it, obviously, right at the beginning of it. So I think it's a, it's a great transition opportunity as well. So thank you. Any questions? On screen, Alec Doya.
Just sort of a general question, what, I mean, we had participation in setting up these goals. And I know I really enjoyed my time working on goal three. What do you guys need from the board going forward to help make sure that these, you know, continue and move on? Obviously, one is always budget, making sure that the, you know, you have the resources you need to implement these things. But what other things can the board do to help make these be successful?
Hi, it's Mike. I think that having board members participate in the committees was really helpful to both, I think, for the committees and also for the board members. I don't want to speak for you, but I think it gave you an opportunity to kind of see how we're planning and to exercise that oversight that you spoke of before. And I'm very appreciative of that. And I think that both formally and informally, we have ways of getting the board's feedback on our evolving plans. And I've always found that to be really helpful as a connection to the community. And so I think that, that continuing in that role, keeping the channels of communication open and will, will be very helpful. And, you know, providing that, that sort of feedback and that connection to the community is always appreciated. I don't know if you guys want to add anything?
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you all. So go ahead.
So, hang on. Thank you very much to you and to all everybody participating in the committees. Because I think it's, it's a lot of, it took a lot of time and it, clearly it's, it's taken a lot of time as well, right? We started in, in September and here we are in March. And I think that I'd love for us to shift from planning mode into action mode. And I know we do a lot of action in the background while we're planning, but I would love to, to, to see us transition to a little bit more of an agile framework around this, which is, you know, really kind of starting to try some things and iterate on them and understand what we're trying to achieve and measuring success against them. And then talking to the community about where we're actually taking action. We did a lot of work on social emotional learning and didn't communicate really well about exactly what we had done. And so I think the community just had waiting to hear from us about what actions have been taken. So I think we would benefit from having taken that agile approach with a lot of this work and really kind of communicating out to the community what's been done along these, just to keep the momentum going and, and make sure they're safe front of mind. So thanks for the work that's been done and look forward to the work that is to be done.
I was very excited to hear about the work that Stacy Williams is doing with the sixth and seventh graders. And to Mariquita's point, I think that's, not with the sixth and seventh graders, sorry, but the teachers of the sixth and seventh graders. And precisely because it's not with the students directly, sharing that information with the community is, is really helpful to sort of expand the awareness of, of accomplishments and of, of process that is moving forward. So thank you for that suggestion, Mariquita. I, I really appreciate that. And I, I thank, thank you all for all the work that's gone in as well as all of the, the teachers and parents in the community and my fellow board members who have participated. And, and the students as well and the other administrators. I mean, this really has been a, a, a group effort. And it, it is, it is moving forward and that is really positive to see. So thank you. Okay, with that, we move on to the budget update. Brian?
Thank you. I think a great opportunity today just to take a very brief moment, actually let me breathe this time. It's not always my forte to do so, but this, this really will be short. In front of the board members who are all here now, and Alec and Doya will have coffee screen next time you're here. These are some of those updates that we spoke about at the last meeting. Some of the double siding that is necessary. There are also two documents. There was the ETA longevity payment backup document and the consultant document that needed a second look. In both of those cases, there's no change to the budget. The numbers are reflected properly in the budget. It's the backup that was differing from what was represented. In particular, on the consultants, you won't be able to tie out the numbers that you see there to the category sheet because some of the consultants are in different categories as we've talked. They've got to be placed somewhere. So I tried to separate the two for you from those that have that total of 177,000 should match up to what you see on the consultant sheet and then those additional consultants below that, some of which are in the BOSI's line, the COSR's line, and another in the technology category on that category sheet. No substantive changes to, to the budget to discuss today. However, I think at the April 6th meeting, Wednesday, April 6th meeting that will be upcoming, we'll talk about any material or material variances that we've seen. I think most notable on the revenue side is the executive budget. Over at that point, we'll have a better sense if there's any change in the state aid expected or any other substantial changes along the way. We'll also take a, a look at our BOSI's aid coming in because we've got some revised figures with additional spending. We get additional benefits. On the expenditure side, we have some known retirements that, that we can account for. We have some shifting of expenditures that we've been able to absorb in this year's budget, which might help us draw down on the other side. And we can talk about some potential increases. I think the two areas, I pointed out, one of them, insurance that, that we're looking at. We have a meeting with our, our representatives this week. And John McCabe is, is going to take people first. It's like our last date to try to capture as much information we can about utilities to make the, the best projection we can for next year with rising costs there. There's some concern that that might lead to some increases in those lines. As much as we can move between lines and absorb in this year, we will do so. But, but we'll have a, a presentation at that time. I think the last thing that we bring up is any adjustments to the taxable assessment predictions that we have. And then as a consequence, tax rate increase projections. And we'll produce a new category sheet at that time with those variances and make sure that it ties up properly. Alec, to your, your question. Alec, to your, your question and point from the last meeting. Other than that, I don't have any other updates, but I'm happy to take any questions that have developed since we last spoke.
Can you just highlight which line on the special ed sheet changed?
The special ed sheet didn't change. This was, you didn't have the back, the second side.
Just a printout.
That was the double sided copy. Same as for the tax-based growth factors, all the western.
Any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, but what, I do have, I have to give the public, all right. Is, are there any questions on the budget or the presentation about the district goal from the community? Okay, as I see none, you're taking which one out of number three? Yeah, G, G three, G three? Okay, we're taking, okay.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the resignation due to retirement of Lord Manille, speech and language, language pathologist effective June 30th, 2022.
So first, do I have a motion, Jennifer, second, Monica?
And we do have a comment.
Yes. Yes. Oh.
Hi, everyone. It is so nice to see everyone here in the crowd tonight. And I thank you for joining us because I have the pleasure of speaking tonight about Leslie Manille, the speech and language teacher from Sealy Place. Leslie began working at Sealy Place in 2004. She was hired as a speech and language teacher, which is the exact job from which she is retiring. Being at an SLP was not her first job as her first career was quite different. Leslie worked in the film business and also worked as a script reader and a film production assistant. Leslie, a lover of languages, made a career change and found her role as a speech language pathologist. We are so glad that you made the switch. While in Edgemont, we estimate that Leslie has worked with approximately 725 students. She is, she has also worked with many teachers through her role within Sealy, with the ETA and as a mentor. In the ETA, Leslie has served on the executive board and has been a longtime editor of the ETA pipeline. Leslie has acted as a mentor officially or unofficially to every speech language pathologist in the district. This is where my speech gets more personal as Leslie was my mentor when I came to Sealy in 2009. Not only was she my mentor, but she was on the committee of, that hired me two weeks before the school year began. To me, Leslie has always been a trustworthy professional who has the heart of gold, the mind of a scholar, and the humor of a comedian. To best hear about Leslie, we've asked a few of her colleagues to share their perspective. They shared the following. Leslie is loving, concerned, caring, and a supportive teacher. She is also brilliant and compassionate. She is an excellent diagnostician and provides her students with not only the speech and language support they need, but also the social and emotional support necessary to build their inner confidence and self-esteem. Leslie is very knowledgeable, yet she's always pushing herself to learn more. She is a lifelong learner and remains up to date with the latest research and practices. She is collaborative and has brought new programs to the speech and language department. Leslie is a thoughtful educator who cares about the whole child and will get to know everything about her students that may impact their success with their speech and language development. Not only is Leslie the consummate professional, but as a colleague once dubbed her, in the very best way, she is everyone's mother. She cares about both her students and her colleagues in the most sincere ways. She takes care of everyone. Leslie is the type of person who brings you flowers when you've had a really bad day. Thank you, Leslie. In her retirement, Leslie will be returning to her home state of Rhode Island. Her daughter Diane will remain in New York while she and John move to College Hill, hopefully in Providence, with their dog Molly. It is our hope that she finds an area of Rhode Island where she can take long bike rides and enjoy her life in a quieter place. We are sure that she will continue to give her time and energy to the League of Women Voters, clothing drives for refugees, and energy to the league, and managing deliveries for a farm co-op. I also hope that every time I call her, she answers the phone. Speechroom! Leslie, you are our mentor, our teacher, our colleague and our friend, and you will be truly missed. Congratulations on your retirement.
Yes, okay, so do we have a vote on accepting the retirement? Hold on.
Doya, are you voting on this?
Okay. Congratulations. Okay, so now we move on to a G personnel. I guess the board approval of G personnel, numbers one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, all the way through, 20, 20.
As well as eight students, number one, I business, numbers one through 10.
Do I have a motion? Mariquita, second, Jennifer, all in favor? I can't see Doya. Yeah, he's working on it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are unanimous. All right, and I'm going to move on to schedule of meetings. The next one is April 6th. I'm not sure if we're going to move back to the D annex. Let's have a quick discussion. Victoria, what do you, well?
Well, this is working. So the downside is getting to this building, right? For anyone who's challenged coming down all the stairs and it's farther, but there's more room, people can come.
So, so I'm, I'm the instigator here. I'm the one who wanted to try and make it more accessible. But if, if we are going to have more people in attendance, this is clearly the more practical place. Any feedback from anybody else on the board on this?
I would be curious about, because previously, one of the concerns was audio in terms of how it transmits to YouTube for people who are unable to attend. I'd be curious to see how the YouTube sounded, but. I'm sorry, it, it, but, but it's, it's transmitting fine, people are being heard and. Okay, well, that's.
I, I do think, you know, when we made the shift today, we thought this would be a good opportunity to drive the owl out of this room as well. People will view what it comes out like.
Right.
On the back end. I can say I think the setup in this location is a little bit simpler than it is in the other locations we tried this year. Maybe a little bit more flexible for our needs.
All right, then let's, let's say that for now, we will say that the next meeting will be in this room. The meeting after that will be on April 19th. And until we decide otherwise, presumably it will stay here moving forward. And then the meeting after that will be on May 10th. And with that, oh, sorry.
So the sixth is a Wednesday?
Oh, yes, thank you for that reminder. Normally, we meet on Tuesday, that we will be meeting on April 6th, that, for, for the next meeting. Okay, and with that, we are, oh, sorry.
We do have the budget vote. What do we do with the budget vote?
The 10?
May 17th.
May, Tuesday, May 17th. Oh, the public vote, yes, sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, and with, with that.